Good evening and welcome to the October 5, 2015, regular meeting of the Mayor and City Council. The first item on our agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to ask Mr. Charles Farrell to come up to the podium and lead us in the pledge, if everyone would rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is reflection. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence, please. Next we have the approval of minutes, and we have three sets of minutes, first being from a work session held on August 31. What is the pleasure of the council?
Remove, I can't even say it tonight. Move for the work session on held on August 31, 2015.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries 4-0. Next, we have the minutes from regular session held on September 8. What is the pleasure of the council?
I'll move approval of the minutes from the meeting of September 8, 2015.
Yeah.
Second, that one too.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries 4-0. Next, we have minutes from the work session held on September 28. What is the pleasure of the council?
I move approval of the minutes of September 28.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries 4-0. Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda tonight. There are two items. What's the pleasure of the council?
Move for the consent items.
Second.
I'm about to say another thing tonight.
Promise?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries 4-0. Next, we have presentations, and I would like to ask Mr. and Mrs. Charles Farrell to join me at the podium. Yeah. So, it came to my attention a little while back that Mr. Farrell, who is a longtime volunteer in the city, has done great work for a lot of years in the city, received a prestigious award from an organization but was unable to attend to receive it, and I wanted the city, I wanted him to have a chance to receive recognition for it in front of the city. So, the Health Physics Society holds an awards ceremony each year at its annual meeting. At the ceremony this year, at this, I'm sorry, at this ceremony, the HPS honors individuals who have been selected by the awards committee members to be recognized for accomplishments and actions that meet the criteria of one of the HPS awards established in the rules of the society. The Distinguished Public Service Award is intended to acknowledge outstanding contributions to the profession of health physics while in public service, or service to the general public that significantly contributes to the relationship between the public and the health physics profession. And Mr. Charles Farrell was the recipient of this award on July 14, 2015. So, we have prepared a certificate of recognition here in the city, on behalf of myself and the City Council, to you, Charles Farrell, in honor of your outstanding achievement on receiving the Distinguished Public Service Award from the Health Physics Society, and an appreciation for your ongoing commitment to our community. Congratulations and best wishes in all future endeavors presented this fifth day of October 2015 and signed by me. Congratulations. Come back here, let's take a picture. You get in the center. Do you want to say anything, Charlie? You don't, you can, but you-
Couple words, please. I grew up in West Virginia, which is known as one of the best places to live, and I grew up in Staley, part of Parksville, West Virginia, home of Stonewall Jackson, in a community that was known as God's country, but I now live in the greatest city in the United States.
The world, the world.
The world, okay. We had three health physicists on our, one block of our street. We had eight Eagle Scouts, which had a hand or foot in getting them all through. Scouting has been a good part of Gaithersburg, and we used to have the Good Scout of the Year sponsored by the city of Gaithersburg, and quite a number of people got that. It's been a good place to live, and I really enjoyed it, and it's a fine community.
Excellent.
That's it.
Thank you. Next, we have our Character Counts Month proclamation. I'd like to invite Julie's Arnold, Christina Herndon, youth services, site managers, youth from our G-Corps program, and I am going to let Shanti Srinivasashar read the details here.
In Gaithersburg, we live, learn, and play together, is the theme of this year's month-long Character Counts celebration in October, focusing on parents, youth, and families. Activities highlight the six pillars of character: trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. Gaithersburg has been a Character Counts city since 1996. Events and activities include youth poster and essay contests, grade and person business of character awards, distribution of dictionaries to area third graders, along with Character Counts information courtesy of the Gaithersburg Rotary Club, character-themed read-aloud programs at the Community Museum, youth and law enforcement summit, spooky talks at the Rio Washingtonian Center, and Maloween at Lake Forest Mall, Gaithersburg Shreds Recycling Event, diversity program discussion at the Benjamin Gaither Center, and Gaithersburg Youth Club service projects, team-building games, and a release of a character-themed podcast. Complete details are available on the city's website. These initiatives are made possible by our partners, the Montgomery County Volunteer Center, Lake Forest Shopping Center, Rio Washingtonian Center, the City of Gaithersburg High School Student Union, City of Gaithersburg Youth Club, and Educational Enrichment Committee, the W. Edward Bora Memorial Fund, the Montgomery Village, and Gaithersburg Rotary Clubs, Rogers Consulting, and Women Who Cares Ministries. We will, okay, G-Corps is a one-week summer program in which participants earn SSL hours for their active involvement in community service projects.
All right. And I will read the proclamation. Proclamation of the Mayor and City Council of Gaithersburg, whereas the character of a city is only as strong as the character of its residents, including its youngest citizens, and whereas effective character education is based on core ethical values that form the foundation of a democratic society, including trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship, and whereas the city formally adopted Character Counts as an ethics-based program in 1996, and calls upon individuals, families, schools, youth organizations, faith-based institutions, civic groups, and other organizations to focus on character education, not only during Character Counts Month but throughout the year. Now therefore I, Judd Ashman, by the power vested in me as Mayor of Gaithersburg, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2015 as Character Counts Month in the city of Gaithersburg, and call upon the community and interested groups to embrace the six pillars of character and observe the month with appropriate activities. Proclaim this fifth day of October 2015, and signed by me. You get to hold this. Let's give these guys around. Take a few pictures. Does anybody want to say anything, or? It's totally up to you. Okay. Not saying any takers. Thank you all. Thank you all very much. You guys get to keep. I would like Dr. Elspeth Bell and members of the Gaithersburg Hoarding Task Force to please join me here at the podium. We are proclaiming the next week as Obsessive Compulsive Disorder, OCD Awareness Week in the city of Gaithersburg. October 11 through 17, 2015, is National Obsessive Compulsive Disorder Awareness Week. Based on averages, it is estimated that more than 1,600 City of Gaithersburg residents will experience the impact of OCD during their lifetime. The city encourages residents to seek assistance from area nonprofit mental health providers. Information on services for adults and youth is available through the City of Gaithersburg Community Services Division, which you can reach at 301-258-6395. We also invite area mental health professionals, caseworkers, and social workers to attend an upcoming training entitled Working Through Hoarding: Understanding, Assessing, and Treating Hoarding Behavior at the Activity Center at Borre Park on October 15, 2015. More information is available on the Hoarding Task Force page on the city's website at gaithersburgmd.gov. So, we have a proclamation, and thank you all for being with us. Proclamation of the Mayor and City Council of Gaithersburg, whereas the International Obsessive Compulsive Disorder Foundation has recognized that 2.5% of the population will experience obsessive-compulsive disorder, OCD, symptoms at some time in their lives, including more than 1,600 residents of the city of Gaithersburg, and whereas the Gaithersburg Hoarding Task Force has been active in connecting with residents about the issue of hoarding a disorder closely related to OCD, and whereas the city calls upon individuals, families, schools, youth organizations, faith-based institutions, civic groups, and other organizations to focus on raising awareness and understanding obsessive-compulsive and related disorders with the goal of helping more people get timely access to appropriate and effective treatment, now therefore I, Judd Ashman, by the power vested in me as Mayor of Gaithersburg, do hereby proclaim the week of October 11 through 17, 2015, as Obsessive Compulsive Disorder Awareness Week in the city of Gaithersburg, and call upon the community and interested groups to observe the week with appropriate activities. Proclaim this fifth day of October 2015, and signed by me. Thank you all for being here. Adam, let you hold this. Let's give them a round of applause. Now, would you like to say a few words? Not necessar-
Don't obsess about it.
I would likely do that.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you for supporting us, yes.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Next, I'd like to invite Judy Clark and Kim Berry. Judy from Women Who Care Ministries, Kim from Yasha Circle, is Yasha, wait a second, is Yasha Circle a name or is that a thing? It's a name. We, okay, we want Yasha Circle to join us here then. I didn't know. From the Peoples Community Baptist Church. It's both a name and a thing, but a beautiful thing. Okay. Okay. So, October is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Gaithersburg is committed to supporting the prevention of domestic violence and assisting those throughout our community who directly and indirectly suffer from its devastating effects. On Saturday, October 10, this Saturday, Gaithersburg will join with Women Who Care Ministries, the Victims Rights Foundation, and Yasha Circle, and the People's Community Baptist Church to present the Ninth Annual Restore the Joy Domestic Violence Awareness Luncheon. Is this, is this the ninth or the tenth?
Ninth.
Ninth, okay, I was right. At the Crown Plaza in Rockville. The event, which is from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., will feature keynote addressed by celebrity speaker Jewel Diamond Taylor, a resource fair, panel discussions, and inspirational performances. For more information on this special event, please visit womenwhocareministries.org. And I would like to read this, this is the, okay, gotcha. We have the reading ones and we have the taking ones, okay. Proclamation of the Mayor and City Council of Gaithersburg, whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects millions of Americans of all races, ages, gender, and income levels, and whereas one in three Americans has witnessed an incident of domestic violence which can have long-term damaging effects, not only on the victim but also on family, friends, and the community at large, and whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity, and whereas public awareness provides an opportunity to renew our commitment to preventing domestic violence, encouraging victims, families, and friends to seek help from agencies and organizations, and building a community where all citizens can live with dignity, work productively, and achieve their dreams, now therefore I, Judd Ashman, by the power vested in me as Mayor of Gaithersburg, do hereby proclaim October 2015 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month throughout the city of Gaithersburg, encouraging our residents to get involved, to help recognize, prevent, and end domestic violence in our community. Proclaim this fifth day of October 2015, and signed by me. Thank you, ladies, for being here. We can give them a round of applause. Have a-
We wish to thank the city of Gaithersburg for, first, recognizing National Domestic Violence Month, and, second, for supporting the work of Women Who Care Ministries, Victims Rights Foundation, and Yasha Circle Ministry. We recognize that lots of persons do not like to discuss domestic violence issues because they're difficult things to discuss, but we do appreciate those who are sensitive enough and caring enough to address the issue. And we're very grateful for the partnership that we've had with the city of Gaithersburg for the last nine years in supporting Restore the Joy Conference Luncheon, and we look forward to seeing you. If you are just hearing about this for the first time, please come out on Saturday the 10th at the Crown Plaza to encourage those who are still experiencing domestic violence, and to celebrate those who have overcome and who are surviving, and we want to also share information with persons, especially our youth, so they do, they do not get into domestic violence, so they know those signs beforehand. So, come on out and celebrate and encourage at the same time. Thank you so much for being here.
Next, we have public comments. This is the time where the Mayor and Council hear from anyone who'd like to speak about a topic that's not a, a public hearing, and we have no public hearings this evening, so basically anything. We ask that you keep your comments to no more than three minutes, state your name and address for the record. When your time is down to 30 seconds, the timer will beep and turn yellow, and when your time's up, it will beep and turn red. Who'd like to be the first speaker? Come on. Aaron, did you, go ahead.
My name is Aaron Rosenzweig. I live on One Thorburn Road. In the newspaper, I saw a cartoon in poor taste. They took Rockville Council members and replaced their heads with chickens, then said their priorities are backwards. Of all the important things going on, why do we need to discuss chickens? In reality, it was in poor taste to ban chickens in 2006, and many residents never stopped complaining about the decision. When new council members were elected, they started listening to their citizens. I reached out to the Rockville Council and invited them to my home, and we had a good time. They'd never seen a live chicken up close before. They could not get over how soft and sweet they are. They had zero complaints about the look, the smell, or anything. They witnessed collars on chickens, the whole nine yards. I have no doubt that this experience was what enabled them to go to public hearing and reverse the 2006 decision. We can now have chickens in Rockville again. I attended the 2015 public hearing in Rockville. I made it clear that when I was shopping for a home, we wanted the Wooten Cluster. That means either Rockville or Gaithersburg would work. Another stipulation was chickens. It made our choice easy. Since Rockville banned chickens outright, Gaithersburg was the way to go, or so we thought. Gaithersburg has a severe problem. Our city staff have forgotten that all citizens have rights. Just because a rude, irate citizen phones a complaint does not mean it is valid. You must treat all citizens with respect. You must protect all citizens. Lisa Holland and Jorge Esmeu are the worst offenders. What unfolds is months of ignorance and harassment. It started with a heavy beating of my front door. This is the city of Gaithersburg. You cannot have chickens in the city. And then, you can have chickens in the city, but you put them in the wrong place. And then, you put them in the right place, but you can't let them out of the coop. And then, you can let them out of the coop, but you can't bring them to public areas like dogs. And then, everybody hates you. Why don't you move away? You are the only people in Gaithersburg who have chickens. And then, do you have eggs? Aha! You need a rooster to have eggs. I know you want eggs, but you cannot have eggs. I'm from Guatemala. I'm an expert. This is the rooster. I take him now. No, I'm not going to ask your neighbors if there's any crowing. No, I'm not going to read the ordinances. I'm going to call another van. And then, oh, I don't know why I didn't see it before. You have two roosters. Shall I take them now or get a third opinion? And then, either you let us take your chickens, or you can keep them inside your house 24 hours a day, seven days a week, or you can erect a privacy fence. And then, no and then. And then, no and then. And then, if you say "and then" one more time, I will. And then, 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 I ended up in City Hall. Get the picture? I am your constituent. I pay my taxes. Why are you not enraged by how my family was treated? Please tell me why you had to convert the sounds like a rooster ban into the looks like a rooster ban in 2010. When are you going to reprimand Jorge Esmeu and Lisa Holland?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Do we have any other questions? No, thank you. Please. We have any other speakers this evening? Not hearing any, not seeing any. We're going to go to from the Mayor and City Council, and start with Councilmember Morafa.
Are you sure you want to do that? I can't tell. First off, I have a, an announcement to make. It's a vacancy announcement. The Mayor and City Council are seeking members to serve on a number of city boards, on commissions and committees. Joining is a way to get involved and to help your community. The following have vacancies. The Animal Control Board. On this, on this committee, we need an alternate public-at-large business community and one alternate representative of the Montgomery County Veterinary Medical Association, or should have some training and/or experience in the proper training or care of animals. Open until filled. Commission on Landlord Tenant Affairs. One full tenant representative and one alternate tenant, and that also will be open until filled. Community Advisory Committee, Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, Educational Enrichment Committee, Multicultural Affairs Committee, Police Advisory Committee, Senior Advisory Committee, and the Transportation Committee. If you're interested in serving on any of these above committees, please send a letter of interest and a resume to the Mayor and City Council, 31 South Summit Avenue, Gaithersburg, Maryland, 20877, or you can do it via email to cityhall@gaitersburgmd.gov. For more information and official announcements, you can visit the city's website, www.gaitersburgmd.gov, or you can just contact the City Manager's Office. We have a bunch of things, and I'll just keep it short. The, three of us, the Mayor and myself, and Mike went to Ted's Montana Grill Grand Opening today and got to meet and have a picture taken with Ted Turner, another wonderful addition to Gaithersburg, and as the Mayor said, you know, in his talk today, you know, it's a great day for Gaithersburg when we get these new businesses. A really nice place, and it just enhances not only Gaithersburg but also Crown Farm. A couple of weeks ago, a number of us were out, and we helped celebrate the fifth anniversary of the grape escape and other small businesses doing well in Gaithersburg. And I would also like to take a moment tonight and congratulate Charles for his awards. I've had the pleasure of working and knowing Charles for a good number of years, so thank you very much, and thank you for all your service to the city. You're a great asset to the city.
Thanks, Henry. Neil.
Okay. Thank you. I'd also like to chime in on Ted's Montana Grill. While I was unable to make it to the ribbon cutting, I did have the pleasure of actually having dinner at their soft opening on Saturday evening. The food is terrific, and I second Henry's comments. It is going to be a great addition to our city's, we're really becoming a dining destination here. I honestly have never eaten bison before, and bison steak is really good. I guess I'm glad it's off the endangered list now. Also, last week, attended Montgomery County Council of PTAs session on the Quinns Orchard Cluster capacity issues, where they brought in Bruce Crispell from, from MCPS to discuss the capacity issues. Any number of options were discussed as possible recommendations, but the recommendations will actually be made later this month. So, we have a lot of people who have been talking about what the possible, possibilities might be to relieve congestion at Rachel Carson and other schools in the Quinns Orchard Cluster. A lot of the discussion was also very relevant to the Gaithersburg Cluster and some of the other very crowded schools like Summit Hall Elementary. So, hopefully, we'll get good news later in the month when the superintendent makes recommendations and the school board decides what they want to go forward with. Also had the pleasure of attending the annual appreciation breakfast for principals, counselors, and PTAs. It was a terrific annual event, and good to see all the hard-working people taking care of educating our children. So, I have a long list of announcements of upcoming events and activities for the month of October. Gaithersburg's election for mayor, oh my God, there's an election coming up. Anyway, Mayor and three city council members is Tuesday, November 3. The last day to register to vote is October 19. Visit the city's website for information, and please come out and vote. October is Character Counts Month, and we planned a variety of family-friendly events and activities. Visit the city's website for complete details. Donations and volunteers are being sought for the city's annual holiday giving program, which helps families in need in November and December. Donations can be conveniently made online this year. Buy fresh local produce and more at Gaithersburg Farmers Markets, Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in Kentlands, and Thursdays from 12:30 to 6:00 p.m. in Old Town. Join the Gaithersburg Book Festival and Politics and Pros for a special event, An Evening with Frederick Forsythe, great suspense and action novelist, on October 7, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Gaithersburg Library. For more information, visit gaithersburgbookfestival.org. The Ninth Annual Restore the Joy Domestic Violence Empowerment Luncheon at the Crown Plaza takes place on October 10, and features keynote speaker Jewel Diamond Taylor. Enjoy one ice cream at half price with each painted mission on closing day of the miniature golf course on October 11. Experience a day of authentic Bavarian food and beer, live entertainment and activities, and lively performances by German bands and Bavarian dancers at the 24th Annual Oktoberfest at the Kentlands, October 11, from noon to 5:00 p.m. And as part of the singer-songwriter concert series, Birds of Chicago, will perform on the main stage from noon to 2:00 p.m. Welcome to Chestnut Lodge, the story of Frida Frömm Reichmann kicks off the Community Museum After Hours informational lecture series on October 13. Disney's Aladdin Jr. is onstage at the Arts Barn, October 16 through the 25. Residents are invited to bring paper and select electronics for secure shredding and disposal to the free community shredding and e-recycling event on October 17 at the Activity Center at Borre Park. Finding the Light, a one-woman portrayal of photographer Marissa Roth, takes place at the Arts Barn on October 22. Enjoy jazz, soul, and funk, as the Pete Muldoon Sexteet kicks off Arts on the Green Jazz Series on October 24. Experience- Experience the elegance and charm of historic Kentlands Mansion while meeting one-on-one with wedding vendors at the Fall Bridal Showcase on October 25th. Donate food for the hungry and take part in a GeoCash flash mob on October 25th at Observatory Park. Murder at the Mansion presents Poltergeist, October 30th and 31st at the Kentlands Mansion. For more information on all these events, including hours, admission fees, and ticket purchase, it's available at gaithersburgmd.gov.
Thank you, Neil. Kathy?
As Neil mentioned, we do have a city election coming up. You've probably heard a lot about the presidential election, probably maybe some about congressional, but really, the most important election in your future is this year in 2015 for Gaithersburg. The last day to register to vote in the 2015 city election is Monday, October 19th. That's two weeks from today. To confirm registration, please contact the Montgomery County Board of Elections at 240-777-VOTE, or visit them online at www.777vote.org. You can download an application or check on your registration status. Absentee ballot applications are now available and can be picked up at City Hall, 31 South Summit Avenue during business hours, or downloaded at www.gatherbergmd.gov/government/elections. Early voting sessions for the 2015 city election will be held at City Hall on Sunday, October 25th from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., on Tuesday, October 27th from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m., and on Saturday, October 31st from noon to 5:00 p.m. Polls will be open on Tuesday, November 3rd from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. For complete election information, you can go online to www.gatherbergmd.gov/government/elections, or contact election clerks Lauren Klinger at 301-258-6310, or email cietelections@gatherbergmd.gov. And just hot off the presses today is the City's Voters' Guide. This is now available in City Hall and other city facilities and will be mailed to all residents. You should receive them by next week. This has statements from the candidates and all the information you need to know to be an active voter. I was happy to attend the Wells picnic, part of the Recovery Month celebrations at Summit Hall Farm Park, and see the graduations ceremony for people who have graduated the Wells Program. I also want to let people know, there's been a lot of talk about school capacity, and the Montgomery Planning Board, which actually sets the subdivision staging policy, which is the county policy that directs their adequate public facilities ordinance, is under review. I believe it's under review every four years. They are having an open house two weeks from today, October 19th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. Really, you should be watching our council meeting, but hopefully, some people will go to this. It is at the Planning Board Auditorium in Silver Spring, and they request that you register. Our RSVP, you don't have to, but you can find more information on the Montgomery Planning Board website, which is montgomeryplanningboard.org. That's all I have.
Okay. Thanks, Kathy. Mike?
Okay, let me read this announcement first. Closed meeting was held at City Hall by the mayor and city council on Monday, September 28th, 2015, at approximately 8:00 p.m., pursuant to a motion adopted unanimously. Meeting was proposed to be closed pursuant to the General Provisions Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, Section 3-305B.3, to consider the acquisition of real property for a public purpose and matters directly related thereto. 3-305B.7, consult with council to obtain legal advice. And 8, consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation. The topic discussed was a potential land swap and the Crown Farm development. Present at the meeting were Mayor Ashman, councilmembers Driscoll, Harris, Morafa, and Sesma. City staff present was city manager Thomas Sello, city attorney, board, assistant city attorney Johnson, director of Public Works Johnson, director of Planning and Code Administration Schlichting, and planning division chief Mattson. Upon conclusion of the discussion, the closed meeting was adjourned at approximately 8:45 p.m. So it was great to be at the opening of Ted's Montana Grill today in downtown Crown. I think that the treat was an opportunity to meet Ted Turner and talk... And he told us a little bit about his dream, actually from when he was a boy, of doing something to save the bison, which were near extinction when he was young. And he explained how many were alive in the United States. When they're, you know, 150 years ago, there were millions of buffalo roaming the plains, basically from the Mississippi all the way west and even into California and the Pacific Coast. But he explained that when he thought about that, learned about it, there were about 5,000 buffalo, I think. And when he opened his restaurant in Montana, and they were going to specialize in offering bison as a healthy alternative to beef, what eventually happened is an increase in the size of herds throughout the United States. So now there are over 500,000 buffalo, and I think quite a number of them are used in the restaurants. But anyway, bison is a very healthy alternative to beef. It was great to have a taste of some of that today, and we're really glad to have them in the restaurant. That restaurant in Gaithersburg, it's the first location of Ted's Montana Grill in the state of Maryland. So we welcome them, along with all the other restaurants. I think they're actually going to work well together. There's a synergy that's resulting from that, all of those restaurants in downtown Crown and in the Rio, et cetera. One of the things, events coming up, it's not a city event, but it is an event, I think, that's important to many in the city. It's the first Trojan Fest 5K race sponsored by the Gaithersburg High School Educational Foundation. It'll be held Saturday, October 10th. There's a fun run that's free for kids, and it will begin and end at the field and at the football field and track at Gaithersburg High School, but most of the route will be through Borer Park. So I've signed up for that. I've challenged any member up here on the board, but I think, I don't think there's any takers. But anyway, I hope that you'll come out and support the Gaithersburg Educational Foundation and become part of this first event, which they plan to make an annual event. Also coming up is, I also wanted to offer my congratulations and gratitude to Mr. Charles Farrell. It's been, you know, Gaithersburg is a great city largely because of people like him, and Mr. Farrell's had a lot to do with making it great. So I want to thank you again for your service. And then finally, we had a long list of events recited by Neil over here earlier, and what I wanted to talk about is, what I wanted to introduce to you is the new mobile app that the city has developed, which you'll be able to find out about all kinds of those events. So Chris, can you put this up on the screen? There we go. This is our new Gaithersburg Arts and Events mobile app. It's available to iPhone, iPad, and Android users, or iOS users and Android users. And basically, it provides a calendar of events at your fingertips, so you can learn about upcoming performances. Stay connected with city, with all the arts and events, whether they're events and festivals or arts on the green at the museums, at our theater, the Kentlands Mansion, the various markets that we have. And then, featuring our major celebrations, Celebrate Gaithersburg, the Gaithersburg Book Festival, and Oktoberfest. All of that stuff can be downloaded on that app. And if we look at the next slide, it shows you just what some of that looks like. Under Special Events, you'll be able to see details about the Gaithersburg Labor Day Parade, the Birds of Chicago performance at Oktoberfest. The Oktoberfest, instead of having a separate app now, you'll be able to download information about that. You can actually, here's the bridal showcase. Concerts, these are a number of different concerts that we have, all on that app. You can actually save the concerts to your calendar on your mobile device as well, so that you don't have to go back to the app, but you'll be reminded, and then be able to click back to the app. Here's theater listings, et cetera. So you can favorite these events and, you know, actually plan your schedule when you attend some of our events. We can look at events happening at the Arts Barn, at the Kentlands Mansion, at the Community Museum, at the International Latitude Observatory. Those are just some examples, if you wanted to look at our museums. We have three museums in the city, if you didn't know that. Some great performing spaces and other spaces used for entertainment and social functions like the mansion and the Arts on the Green program. So advise, this app is available free. It's available on the Apple App Store and Google Play as well. Download it now to your iPhone. Download it before, so you can start planning for all the things you're going to do at Oktoberfest on Sunday. So anyway, just wanted to show you that. I want to thank staff for developing this. I think it's a nice application that all of us will be able to use. I know that our city staff is busy downloading it right now to their mobile devices. So anyway, please take advantage of that, and once you start working with us, or working with it, let us know if you have any problems, and we'll fix those things and make sure that it's even more useful than it is already. So just wanted to talk about one of the new features that we have to make life a little bit easier to our residents and our non-residents as well. And I think that's all I have. Jeff?
All right. Thank you, Mike. I want to reiterate that we have a terrific author event coming up on Wednesday with Frederick Forsythe. For any of you who've read Day the Jackal or Dogs of War, The Odysseus File, this guy's a really, really well-established big author, coming to talk about his career with his new memoir. It should be really interesting. It's at the Gaithersburg Library, Wednesday evening at 7:00 p.m., and we hope to see everyone at Oktoberfest. I want to give a terrific shout-out to Officer Dan Lane from the Gaithersburg Police Department, who was named by the Crisis Intervention Team of Montgomery County, from the Montgomery County Police Department, as Officer of the Year, which this is, what I'm told from our police chief, is that this is virtually unheard of to have a municipal officer named in this county recognition. So it's really, it's really fantastic, and they will be honoring him at a dinner on Friday. So congratulations out to him. And next, we have From the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few administrative items tonight. First, we did get our annual response from the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development. They do an annual monitoring. We got about $360,000 last year. They focused this year on the homeownership loan program, and we're very pleased with the results. So some recognition of Louise Kaufman and Tina Smith and Lawrence Sukle, that department. HUD can be a tough audit. They come several days on-site, and it was great that all the files were tight and complete.
Excellent.
So that was great. On Thursday, we have the annual Public Works Snow Rodeo, which is a combination training event and competition for our snow drivers, which is a complex bit of business to drive a five-ton truck around in the neighborhoods. They have a competition about getting close to objects, making curves, things like that. Interesting, ABC 7 will be covering it this time, and they'll also be making a side trip over to Constitution Gardens...
Oh, nice.
...to do a separate report. I think that that's stock role. I'm not sure that when that would be aired, but it's coming.
Where are we going to get our snow?
It's tennis balls. Also, many thanks to Councilmember Harris. He introduced us to a group involved in what's called Intelligent Cities, called Civic Smart Stapes. They're attached to GE, and they are going to come down and have a meeting with us in the next few months. They're based in Massachusetts, so they're going to come down especially for us, but they've promised next time they come down, they will. Their focus right now is on Wi-Fi enabling bus shelters, which is something that I think we're interested in, and we're going to talk to them. And on a similar note, we continue to work on some green initiatives. You'll know that we're trying to, it looks like we will get some electric vehicle chargers. But PW is also, the facilities group is in some conversations with people that would put solar panels on our property, and either generate power or hot water or sell power to us at a fixed cost. This will be your call, and it will be a big deal. We're having those preliminary discussions, and they seem to be going okay, but...
Were those, the charges that you're considering, were they the type that I had pointed out to you from, in an email earlier this month, or last month, I should say?
Very likely. We've had two vendors come in so far. One was local from Prince George's County, and one was a national firm. But there are two more actually going to be coming in. So it seems likely that we'll, if that's not one of the two already, that we'll catch them.
Okay. Great.
And that's it.
I did want to, I forgot to mention earlier, that next week, Monday, October 12th, we have a work session on, with two items, annual committee briefing from the Police Advisory Committee and an update on the Gaithersburg Police Station, and the next regular meeting of the mayor and council is October 19th. Next, we have our economic development update. Mr. Tom Lonergan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Couple of comments. Tomorrow afternoon, I will be touring newly leased space of a startup company called ZeroK Nanotechnology. Located at 401 Professional Drive here in the city, this company is small, really just two smart guys and at least about 4,000 square feet of office and lab space. Future's promising, but their story is of particular interest and import here in Gaithersburg as they are an actual spin-off company from NIST. Adam Steele, Brenton Nuffman, got their doctorates in physics, then worked on their post-docs at NIST, and during that time, did research on the application of laser cooling techniques to the generation of new focused ion beam sources. In 2013, ZeroK Nanotech was founded to develop and commercialize new technology that will dramatically improve the performance of focused ion beams. They have a proprietary technology, which is called Low-Diss Low-Temperature Ion Source, which they promise will deliver new capabilities to end users. And in fact, ZeroK has recently been awarded a Small Business Innovation Research, or SBIR, Phase II grant from the National Science Foundation to help them with this technology. ZeroK has also been awarded a grant through the Toolbox Program, as well as through the county's MOVE grant program to support their investment in their new office and lab space. I look forward to meeting with them tomorrow, pursuing some new opportunities for partnerships with NIST. Secondly, and finally, as an alternative to a printed dining guide, thank you Kathy Driscoll for the suggestion. Staff has developed an online mapping application, now in its beta form. You can go to maps.gatherbergmd.gov or backslash restaurants to test-drive this interactive tool. We have not abandoned print yet. We're working with community and public relations on a postcard that will promote this web application. Our primary target audience will be business travelers. These postcards will be distributed to area hotels and other appropriate locations. The digital format accommodates more frequent updates. Each entry includes a photo, address, brief description, and link to the business's website. We would like to thank Jan Kim from the GIS Division and Sharon Dis from my staff for all the work they've put into this.
It's a cool tool.
It is cool.
It's a work in progress, but it's pretty nice.
Yeah. So it's very exciting to hear we're getting a spin-off from NIST. It seems like that should have happened years ago, but I think, you know, now that we're positioned well. And SBIR Phase II is actually a grant that more or less recognizes that the product that was under development in the Phase I is something that has real commercial potential. And so that means that they're gearing up for production to, as a commercial entity, to market and provide their product to whoever's going to be able to pay for it. So that's a big deal, and the fact that they're from NIST, one would expect them to want to find a location close to the campus as well. So I think we've got a number of those places where they'll find something.
That they've done. They've stayed in the city. They're going to professional drive also. Very encouraging.
Well, it looks like NIST is moving forward with a much more formalized and robust technology transfer program as well. It's still in development, but I know they've been talking to you and other folks in the region about moving that one forward. So hopefully, this is the first of many.
Yeah. In fact, we had met with their tech transfer office on campus over the summer, and ZeroK was the talk of the office. Hopefully, more to come.
Cool.
That's cool.
Thank you.
Surely, that has to be the first time focused ion beams has come up at one of our meetings.
I would just mention regarding the restaurant app, that this came up because we stayed at an extended stay hotel briefly when our kitchen was being renovated, and they had a tabletop flip chart of restaurants, half of which were out of business.
People talk flip chart. Wow.
Yeah, yeah. Little thing. I mean, yeah. And it seemed clear that there were people coming here who would be staying here for, you know, a number of days for business and would want to explore places to eat, and they weren't getting any good information on where to eat. So that was something that we could help with, that would help the travelers and the restaurants. So that was the idea.
Excellent idea.
I think it would be interesting if this kind of app was expanded to some of the retail type of establishments as well, so people know where to shop as well as where to eat.
Already, this is called Scope creep. Already, we're expanding. All right. Next, Rob Robinson.
I didn't mean to pull you away. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract to provide consulting services for the city of Gaithersburg's urban forestry inventory. I came before you May 18th, seeking support to issue a request for proposal to hire a consultant to complete and analyze with recommendations a citywide street tree and forest conservation easement survey and inventory. Again, the purpose of this is, once we have this database, it'll afford planning staff, environmental services staff, and public works staff, the ability to identify areas for reinforced, reforestation enhancement, maintenance, replacement, and diversification, expansion, or replanting. The inventory was originally a recommendation in the recently adopted environment and sustainability element, and then we then identified it as an FY16 action item in the current strategic plan. The study, once again, is composed of three parts, the complete inventory of existing street trees, and this is different than what, sometimes what we've done in the past, in that we're going to do all streets regardless of ownership, be it private, state, county, or city. A field review and description of the conservation easements throughout the city of Gaithersburg. This is a qualitative analysis. It's going to focus on the composition, structure, and retention value. And then, once again, a qualitative description of the urban forestry elements on city facilities, including narrative descriptions. The RFP was actually advertised on July 6th, 2015, and we received four bids with very divergent proposals.
It's remarkable.
Yes, and we, I was not surprised, but I was surprised. Upon looking at everything, just, just as a reminder, staff was budgeted $150,000 in FY16 to complete this study. Upon review, obviously, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder was Arbor Pro at $58,800. And sometimes, as Tony had mentioned to me, sometimes things work out, because Arbor Pro was in the RFP in one of the formats we wanted to receive stuff, because that is actually our asset management software for street trees. So, it was very fortuitous. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, the bids that were greatly larger than that, I mean, we have a bid nearly $500,000, almost 10 times as much money, were they doing something different?
One of the things that I noticed going through it, and actually, Mark Scifidi's here with me, in case you have any questions from the DPW aspect of this, was, two of the two highest bids were actually not particularly Arbor-based businesses, they were professional engineering firms. They had exceptionally large numbers of staff that we would be paying for. One of them, you know, for example, with the Arbor Pro bid, you know, they're, the field review of the street trees, they are predicting 160 hours. And one of the larger bids, it was over 4,000 hours. So, very often, the engineering firms, you know, because they aren't, this is, it isn't all they do, they are subbing out, they're bringing in tons of staff, so that's what we found. The other one in the 150 range, it was very competent. One of the concerns, though, with that one was, they had put a cap on the number of street trees they would do, and then they would begin to bill us above and beyond that, and the number they had used, we feel very comfortable, we will exceed that, so then we would be going beyond the 150. So, as I said, Arbor Pro, this is what they do, this is the software that we use, we've already had conversations with them. I mean, they can get the work done. They've actually done work here in this, for the city of Gaithersburg before, so we feel very comfortable with them.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense. I thought they were going to count every leaf, when the other companies...
So did I, when I first saw it.
I guess, on the other hand, I am, are they going to be able to complete the job with that bid? So, that's just my only concern.
Yes, while we're doing the contract now, obviously kickoff, we have missed the fall planting season of this year, so the expectation would be that we would probably do our kickoff meeting next April to hit the spring, and then we have written in, we will have written into the contract that the study is to be completed by September 1st. So, it will definitely be done.
Given the bad weather this summer, it's probably maybe better to see how the trees are in the spring. I mean, you would see what had survived and what hasn't. So, also, I think I'm happy to see, other than Davey, that none of these, I mean, sometimes there's a risk when you hire someone to assess trees, that they would then provide additional services later, and I don't see that in this type of company, that they're going to do the assessment, and then what you do with the information is completely separate.
Yeah, they're, they're very good. As I said, they first helped us set up our program here as an asset management software, and they are understanding what we are looking for again, so they're being very amenable to that. So, as I said, this is something nice, that again, we're not paying for post-processing, which is another added cost with these other ones, so it has worked out.
Have they done any other work in the state or in your area?
Off the top of my head...
Besides providing the software that we use?
Maybe not in the state. Obviously, with all of the bids, you know, we receive, you know, references and work they've done, but we need to be able to help.
Yeah, I don't think any other in the state of Maryland, but I think down there, a proposal had said New Jersey. They're a California-based company, and we've used them before to do some of the street trees in the past, and, you know, they're very competent, very reliable, and actually, they finished up earlier than they were supposed to the last time we used them.
Without missing anything? I guess that's the, so, you know, it's funny that I'm saying, why is this a... I'm just, well, no, look, the reason, the reason that I'm asking is, look, staff estimated $150,000, almost three times this amount, and obviously, based on what you thought they needed to do, now you've got a bid that's, you know, a third of that, of that amount, and I'm just, I want to make sure that, that we're not going to come, they're not going to come back to us and say, oh, we made a mistake, this isn't enough to do what we did, did they, you know? So, that's all I'm asking, and that's great. I think it's a bargain if this is real and they can do it, I'm just...
I feel comfortable, even, even, because I was not here when Mark first had hired them, so I had done the reference checks. I mean, they are a reputable firm, this is not something where you, I agree with your point, when you see that number and you go, huh? But it made me easier, you know, calmed my nerves, knowing, checking with who I checked with, and knowing that the product is for real.
No, and I guess the reason for my skepticism is because what, what staff had budgeted, thinking what it would take. So, you know, if, if you are satisfied that this is the, this is the best responsive bid, then I'm prepared to move the resolution.
Second. So, that was a move? Okay. All right. All those, all those in favor, please say aye. Any votes? Carrie's 4-0. Thank you very much, Rob. Next, we have from the city attorney.
Nothing this evening.
Anything from any other staff present? Yes?
Mayor, Council, I just wanted to update you on a CIP project, which wasn't specifically identified in the 2015 CIP. It's related to the Public Works facility. We're currently doing some changes in the staffing levels, and also relocating some of the stormwater personnel over to Public Works, and with that, we're doing some remodeling of the lower floor, which is actually the third floor, if you're actually in the building, which is kind of odd, but that's what it's labeled. And it really is involving removal of some existing offices. If you've been in that facility, there are a number of small offices along one wall, and we're actually opening up the entire space and only putting back two offices, and then putting in cubicles for the remainder of the staff. The approximate cost is about $168,000. Over half of that is actually the furniture involved with the cubes. That will probably be the only expenditure that you'll see. The remaining expenditures will be under the limits that we would send to council, but I wanted to update you on that. We will be taking it out of contingency initially, which is, you know, 0-00 in terms of the CIP. We'll be transferring some of that funds, once the project is done and ready to pay for, to the Public Works facility, CIP, which is 72-2, just to keep track of it from an accounting standpoint. Happy to answer any questions that you have, I just wanted to make sure when you see that.
Thank you. Anything from anyone else? Not seeing anything. As I explained earlier, next week, we have a work session on, with the two topics regarding the police, I'm just pulling that up, from the Police Advisory Committee, the Annual Committee Briefing, and the update on the Gaithersburg Police Station, and then the next regular meeting of the Mayor and City Council is Monday, October 19th. Until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.